...out and train some of these exhibitors on customer service and how they deal with the trade, in a trade show environment. In addition to that, I'm going to provide them a free lunch and all the information can be found on businessshowcaseexpo.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
There are no further speakers.
I will close the public comment area. I'll call on the county manager, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we would respectfully ask that the board agree to remove item 12B, which is a closed session for personnel.
Any objections? With that, I'll call on approval of the agenda.
Second.
Been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
We've got a video documentary of the one-year anniversary of Hurricane Matthew. I think it's, we talked about, and we've seen this view, and we thought it was appropriate that we do it again tonight for everyone to be able to see. I think it's an outstanding presentation. Commissioner Keefe and I, when we were going through this, one of the things that we talked about, or he talked about, was that the disaster, the hurricane, everybody understood and could understand that. But the problem was, we were going to be judged by the recovery and how long that took. And it's still taking a long time because it's not something that happens overnight. They tell me that they're still recovering from hurricanes five and 10 years ago, and we saw the devastation in other communities. But we did want to recap some of the things that we saw and that we heard. And I will call on the manager if you've got any other comments.
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, we just thought that this was worthy of sharing with the public this evening.
So that we can talk about truly historic situations in relation to the weather. Records of levels of flooding along rivers and creeks.
Well, you know, on the anniversary of Hurricane Matthew, I think it's important for us to look back and see what we did right, what we did wrong, and how we can prepare the next time. The one thing I want our citizens to know is you can never be over-prepared.
October 8th, 2016 was one of the few occasions that I've really been intimidated by weather. And that challenge came at 3:30 in the morning when my staff called me and told me that the barn was flooding and that the shelter was in danger of flooding. It was, I've never felt so helpless in my life.
I think when it really hit me deep is when the representatives from FEMA came down, and he said, "This isn't a 100-year flood. This isn't even a 500-year flood. We're talking biblical proportions." And I think that's when it really hit me, how, what kind of tragedy we could be looking at.
In terms of disasters I've experienced in my lifetime, probably the worst was Hurricane Floyd. And at that time, I was working in a coastal community, and we were cut off from the north to south and the west for about three days due to floodwaters. So Hurricane Matthew reminded me a lot of that situation.
Many citizens, long-term native individuals of Cumberland County, never have seen this type of impact in their entire lifetime.
There was so much loss in this storm. There were, there was, some people lost their homes, some people lost their jobs, some people lost pets, some people, but some people lost their lives. And we have to be cognizant of our responsibilities of this. We hoped, we sat in the EOC many times hoping that there was no lives lost, and it just, it brings a shutter down to all of us when, when you hear that story and it comes through.
Hurricane Matthew was very catastrophic. We saw numbers and calls and rain that we've never seen before, like rainfall, 15 to 18 inches over parts of Cumberland County, because there were over 1,300 rescues from Swiftwater teams. We received over 8,300 911 calls just in the Cumberland County 911 center. At one point, we had over 506 people in our shelters, with over 1,400 different people registered two weeks of the event. Many areas were flooded that have never seen flooding before, along Rockfish Creek, Little Rockfish Creek, Manchester, as well as some of the tributaries leading from western Cumberland County down to the Cape Fear River. There was over 1,100 homes damaged throughout Cumberland County and the city of Fayetteville, as well as over 150 businesses that were damaged during that time.
Infrastructure was impacted, not only transportation, but our power systems, the power grid, our radio communication systems, our telephone systems. From the water standpoint even, all of those major impacts, our railroad system was impacted. So in that impact, we were resilient. That is the most powerful thing about not only all of our first responders. There were stories, and there'll be stories told for many years to come, about how we used a tractor to go retrieve someone, how we used a boat, a canoe, or anything that would float or that would move to go rescue themselves. Neighbor helping neighbor, checking on neighbors, people that didn't know each other coming together in response to a catastrophic event.
Another thing that struck me about this more than anything else when I was in the EOC, I saw first responders and staff members from the Health Department and Social Services, they were there, and they didn't have lights in their own house. Their families may not have had lights, and they're struggling themselves, but they knew that their responsibilities were there to take care of the people who needed them, and that was their job. That story was told time and time again as we went through this EOC.
During the response phase, the blessings that we had with the federal teams being local, that we were not aware of at the time, when rescue and Swiftwater rescue teams were becoming overwhelmed with rescues, as we said, we had over 1,300 rescues conducted during that timeframe. When we reached out to the state for additional assistance, we found that there were federal teams from New York, New Jersey, Ohio, and Pennsylvania sitting right close by staging. They were staging, if Matthew were to have affected Florida more so than it did, we were very lucky to have them, and they, they supported us in ways that we could never repay.
We had a boarding facility in the downtown area that gave us a call and said that their facility was being flooded, that the animals were in danger, the people were in danger, and that we, they needed assistance, they needed somewhere to place these animals. By the time we got there, we couldn't even drive up to the facility because of the amount of flooding, how high the waters were at that place. So people were halfway meeting us, you know, pulling animals, carrying them to trucks. We were, you know, getting the animals as well, loaded as many as we could. I think all in all, we had about 25 to 30 dogs that we ended up picking up from the facility and bringing them back here to the shelter animal control.
I said a number of times, when, when it was impending that we were, that this was going to happen, that Matthew was going to come into Cumberland County, I said, "Nobody blames us for the storm, and everybody appreciates the rescue, but the recovery is where we're going to be judged."
So during Hurricane Matthew, we operated the shelters in terms of helping to assist Red Cross with the shelter. But in addition to that, Department of Social Services, one of our number one responsibilities is providing services to citizens who need food assistance, medical assistance, those kinds of things. So the first thing that we did is we looked at our existing citizens who had lost their food stamp benefits, and the food that they had bought with those benefits. And so even though the county office building was closed, we brought the Department of Social Services staffing early. And we started immediately, under policy, we could replace those citizens who, because of power outages, because they had lost their homes, we could replace their benefits. And so we came in and we served almost 6,000 citizens, and we actually were able to replace their benefit.
In terms of what we've accomplished in recovery and resilience, working with our partners at FEMA and the state of North Carolina, and of course, our local municipalities, we've been able to roll out a number of different programs. A number of these have been done through community development agencies. So those are really the go-to people when it comes to trying to figure out how to best meet the needs of individuals, because everybody's needs are unique. Some people may have had flood insurance, some people may have been renters, some of them may have been homeowners. So everybody's different in terms of their needs, and it's worthwhile for them to make an appointment with our Community Development Department to be able to sit down and have an interview and just decide with them what may or may not be possible in terms of different disaster recovery grants and assistance.
And one of the responsibilities under the county emergency plan is for us to work with the different county agencies and community agencies to make sure that during the response efforts, that before Red Cross, before other agencies can get involved, that we have means for our citizens to access services immediately after the event. Different churches, different organizations came together, and we started identifying what were food needs. And we were able, through Second Harvest Food Bank, to set up food pantries all over the county so that people would be, have access to food. We had Salvation Army that was working with us on clothing donations and furniture donations, because a lot of people lost everything. They lost all their clothes immediately after the event. They needed clothes, and we worked with them, and did various other organizations that assisted. And so that's the first piece of the unmet needs, is how do you immediately respond after the event to meet those immediate needs. Now, through the Cumberland Recovery Disaster Coalition, where now volunteers assume that role. And so they've continued the work of the Unmet Needs Committee, and now they've expanded it to your faith communities and different agencies, and they come together to say, "What are the needs after everybody's gone?"
Well, what stands out to me most at this point in time would be exactly where we're standing, you know, over Cross Creek, directly behind our headquarters library in the background. This right here was completely inundated with floodwaters during Hurricane Matthew. Some of the other areas, obviously, that were very highly impacted for our community was the area around Rockfish Creek. And we have several facilities along Rockfish Creek that were, again, severely impacted from the floodwaters from Hurricane Matthew. One of the ones that comes to mind is McCauley Container Site, which is located off Research Drive. And obviously, after a storm event, you lose power, people have got to get rid of their debris, food in the refrigerator, stuff that got flooded, or whatever impacts they may have, they need that site to get that material to. And obviously, I'll commend our sawed-away staff, Donnie Tew and his staff, doing a tremendous amount of work. You know, we were impacted, and we had that site completely opened back up that same week. Animal control was another area. We had, next to our Sheriff Training Center, we had a bomb bunker that was completely inundated, so we have to replace that. We're in the process of doing that now. And in our animal control facility, we had the horse barn, you know, also that was impacted by floodwaters, some significant erosion going on there, and we've got that underway and completed.
Early in this conversation, I spoke about the Representative FEMA coming and saying that this wasn't a 100-year flood or, or a 500-year flood, but a biblical proportion. But as soon as he said that, I realized that in a month, we may get another one. And even this year, 12 months later, we were right in the path of another destructive storm that could have come. I think we had a lot of lessons learned, and one of the lessons that we had learned was be prepared all the way up to the day that it could happen to you. Preparedness, that is, when you are prepared, generally, you have a very successful outcome. Maintaining safety, maintaining situational awareness, being aware of, researching where you live, making sure you understand the pathways to safety if you need to evacuate your residents. But also, don't forget that emergency preparedness kit, that 72-hour timeframe, where you need to make sure that you have proper water provisions, hygiene, and all those areas, medicine, documents, important legal papers, make sure that you have that weather ready. And also, don't forget our mass communication or awareness, Cumberland Alerts, that is paramount.
I think in every disaster, there's always something, a light at the end. I tell people that when the hurricane comes, you have all the wind and the rain, and as soon as it leaves, it's usually one of the most beautiful days you've ever seen in terms of the sun being out. And I think what we want citizens to know is, first of all, preparation, you can never prepare enough. And that's one of the roles of the CDRC, is also to promote and educate around preparation, and you just can't prepare enough. I certainly hope that our citizens will register with Cumberland Alerts, that is so very important. Find your insurance papers, take the time to learn what's covered, what is your disaster plan, what is your evacuation plan, because it saves lives. And in Cumberland County, disasters are a reality.
I am proud of the men and women of Cumberland County, of what they did during that hurricane. But more important, what they're doing now after this hurricane. The hurricane, we weathered that storm. The next storm is the recovery, and that one is a lot longer, and it's a lot more difficult. I learned that. I thought the storm was going to be the most difficult part, surviving that, but the recovery, the people who were impacted, the people who were lost, that lost everything, and when they talk to you and you see it in their eyes and you feel it in their heart, and you can't help but feel for them, one of the things I tell the citizens here, to know that we're going to be with them to the very end. We're going to see this recovery through. And that's why it's important to look back, to look back at Hurricane Matthew, to say, "Let's learn things, let's be prepared, and let's get ready for the future."
And thank you for all the staff and all the people and the individuals that participated and helped make that, and I think that tells the story. And that story will live on in the hearts of many people in this community for many, many years. Thank you all, and where's the PIO officer? Excuse me. Thank you for the work you did, and Mr. Larry Shaw Jr. for being able to do that presentation. So thank you. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, we have representatives from the Carolina Small Business Development Fund. We have Ms. Roxanne Bailey Reed, and we also have Mr. Greg Taylor, and they'd like to share some information on disaster recovery, resiliency, planning, resources for some of our small businesses and entrepreneurs. Thank you.
Thank you so much for, for letting us be here tonight to really share an update of the good work that we've been part of with the small businesses throughout the state of North Carolina, in particular, in this county. And we have been working diligently to, thank you, we have been working diligently to really go back and review, bringing best practices, what can we do next? And our county was so impacted, and all of the resources that we have been working on is making sure that our small businesses have something in their hands, that, and, and to know that they have a friend out there. We're in the trenches with them constantly. And one of the things that we thought would be an amazing gift in development, something that's a strong takeaway, is the new disaster relief booklet that we just created through our organization. It goes back to what was discussed in the video, checklist. You feel like you have a friend, our faces are in there. We are, we are there to really support the businesses and make sure that everyone has the tools they need. We also are offering monthly webinar series to do a deep dive into preparedness, resiliency, friendship, and support as well. And I'd like to open this up to Greg. He wants to talk, share a little bit of information about the actual programs that we're working on that really are making a huge difference with our small businesses.
You better give me that.
Yeah.
It's good to see you all again. It's been a while since I've been, been up here. But I think most of you were, three of you anyway, were here last time I was here. Our organization has, has been at the forefront of trying to, to help folks recover, businesses recover from Hurricane Matthew. And what we do is we go in and we talk to them, we listen to them, we try to figure out, help them figure out how they're going to move forward and what's their long-term plan to get back up. Help them put together the financial and technical plans that they need, coordinate services with other providers. Larry will remember back when he was at the SBC, and I was the Regional Director for the Small Business and Technology Development Center at Fayette State back a few years ago. So I'm familiar with the resources in the region and how to bring them to bear for, for the businesses. And most of all, of course, we work to provide funding to meet those needs that are identified. Snapshot of our efforts so far on Hurricane Matthew, we've committed more than $2 million to small businesses that were impacted by the hurricane, and we have right now more than $4 million in our pipeline to continue that work. And so far, those dollars have resulted in the retention of about 152 jobs. And I'm forgetting to do that. There we go. To talk, I want to talk a little bit about a few of our lending programs, specifically those that are related to, to the, to the disaster. We got $2 million from Golden Leaf, that actually was part of a state appropriation. They appropriated to Golden Leaf to administer, and we have $2 million of that that we're getting out to the businesses that were impacted by the hurricane. And right now, there is another $4 million that is supposed to be coming our way from a CDBG grant that the Department of Commerce is administering. We're expecting that paperwork to come any day now, keep our fingers crossed. And need to keep our fingers crossed because it's, it's some of the most elusive money out there. Larry will know, most people are, are told there's grants out there for small business, and they came to us, they still come to us and, and want the grant, and 99.999% of the time, they're just getting the grant out there for them. This money potentially could become grants. It's forgivable loans is the way they're, they're phrasing it. We don't have all the details on it yet because we still don't have the, the paperwork from Commerce, but everything we're hearing sounds like this is a program that I, I wish would have been available in the days immediately following the hurricane. I think there would be a lot of the businesses that didn't survive that would have survived if we'd had this kind of program available back then. Part of that planning that...
She tell you to move along.
Yeah. Because that was...
Move on that.
We've also got some EDA money that, that we're working with, that we got from, through our work with the Southeastern Economic Development Commission, Amy's one of the officers of, of that organization, working with Pam Bostick on that. We got that EDA grant, it's $750,000, and our organization is matching that $750,000, and it's for counties in this region. And that's entirely tied to job creation. We have another new product coming on board, new market tax credits. Our organization is, is not small, we have $29 million in assets, but that's not, that's not a lot in the greater scheme of things, and so our projects tend to be smaller. But this may act, this, this program may actually get us into the seven-figure range on some of the projects, help with some of the bigger projects. We also have some community facilities money to help nonprofits, that's a program through rural development. And we have our normal lending programs, which I think is, is one of the reasons why we're a good organization to be administering some of these disaster programs, because not everybody's going to qualify for those types of programs, and we have other money that maybe we can bring to bear to help them anyway. One program I do want to mention because it's very important for the people in this region is, most, most of the time when a business goes to a bank to get a loan, if it's a $100,000 project, then they have to put up 20, and maybe the bank will put up 80. Our organization traditionally does 90-10. We go a little bit further than most traditional lending institutions. But for veterans, our, our boss is a veteran, and he is very fond of saying that for veterans, their service is their equity. So if the business is owned by a veteran or the spouse of a veteran, they can get a loan if their project is fundable with no equity. They get the 100% loan. How can you help share us our, our information with the people that you run into? Let them know that there may be some help out there for their particular needs. Engage us in the community events that you're involved in, you know, let us know, we'll try to be there to, to help you with it. And call us particularly when you have disaster-related events going on, so that we can participate and be there to support you and, and support the people that you're trying to support. And finally, we're successful because of our partners, people like you. We are a nonprofit, and as most of you know, funding to market nonprofits is hard to come by. So we depend upon our partners to help us get the word out as to how we can help. So, you have any questions? And you, you've got some materials we left for you and, and an ink pen. So, any questions?
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
You know, as, no, I'll just say thank you. Thank you. As we move around the county, and Tracy will tell you, I think the last event we had, we can feel the frustration of individuals in this community who just don't know where to go. So the more information we put out there for them to be able to at least try to tap into that, the better. So thank you all for coming. I heard you over at Fayette State, and so I thank you for, for coming on my invitation. Thank you.
Thank you for the invite.
You're welcome. And there are some brochures over there, anybody? Get up. And let me, at this moment, recognize Mr. Donald Hartman, who's here as the Library Board of Trustees. I will be in Winston-Salem tomorrow at the State Library Association, speaking on behalf of Cumberland County, so I'll be up there, leaving here after this meeting, so don't y'all take too long to talk too much. Just throw that in. We've got our consent agenda. Are there any arguments to be removed from the consent agenda?
Removed it.
Go ahead.
Moved that we approved the consent agenda.
Second. Been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
That takes us to item four, I think, which is our public hearings. The very first one is the uncontested rezoning case, our problem. Madam Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first case is case P-17-39, and our, our Planning Director, Mr. Lloyd, will provide this presentation.
If I can take you back one more, because I'm, sometime I jump. Can you read the procedure first for the public?
Certainly.
For those who want to speak and they can be heard in there.
Absolutely.
That was my phone.
Absolutely. And the zoning policy will apply to the contested case as well. Arguments by the proponents and opponents shall be limited to a maximum of 10 minutes for each side. If arguments are presented by a group representative, his or her presentation shall be limited to a maximum period of five minutes. If there is no group representative, each speaker shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the 10-minute time limit is attained. Rebutts will only be permitted at the discretion of the chairman with a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side. Thank you.
Now, Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. The, our first case, uncontested rezoning case is case P-17-39.
Yes, ma'am. This case is just about an acre, is requested rezoning from RR Rural Residential to C-1P Plan Commercial. There was no opposition, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously.
I will open the public hearing. Ask the clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
With no speakers, I will close the public hearing. I'll call for any questions or discussions. If none, I call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to find the request for rezoning consistent with the 2030 Growth Vision Plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
I'll call for a second motion.
Yeah, move that we, case P-17-39, move to approve the request for C-1P Plan Local Business zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, all those in favor?
But unanimous.
We'll go to contested rezoning cases.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, case P-17-30.
Yes, ma'am. This is a rezoning that first came in as a requested rezoning, R-10 Residential to C-1P Plan Commercial. We realized there was no sewer, so the staff advised the applicant that if he had any chance at all, he would want to consider extended sewer. We couldn't hold the applicant to that on a straight rezoning. Thus, it was changed to a conditional zoning where he showed that sewer would be extended, and we could hold him to that promise. With that being said, it's roughly five acres, shown in hatch pattern, the intersection of Doc Bennett Road and Highway 87 South. Current zoning in the area consists of some CP across Doc Bennett Road, C-1P, I'm sorry, C-1P across Highway 87, MP Plan Industrial, R-10 CU in the neighborhood to the south, and RR Rural Residential zoning. Current land use shows single-family housing. Current land use shows single-family housing in yellow and just a utility substation in purple. Area of view of the subject property. The neighborhood to the south has public water...